We will now go through the process of building our agenda. Actually, at the start, we will do, we do have one exciting announcement to recognize an employee. I'd like to read this nomination. Well, I guess first, this is a recognition of Molly Fillerup as the April 2020 Employee of the Month. Now, I'll read this nomination letter. "It is my privilege to nominate Deputy Molly Fillerup for the Utah County Employee of the Month Award. Molly has been assigned to multiple departments in the jail. She currently is assigned as the deputy in charge in booking. She has served as trainer, mentor, and friend to all. She is widely considered to be one of the most well-respected deputies in corrections. I worked with her both as a deputy and as her supervisor. I observed her work ethic and her general concern for others daily." This is coming from, obviously, not me personally, but someone in her department. "She puts most of her effort into serving others and making sure both staff and inmates she works with have the best care the jail can provide. She is patient, helpful, and doesn't complain while always making sure to do more than her fair share of the work. In the jail, things can go from good to bad quickly. Having Deputy Fillerup there makes these moments much easier to handle. Earlier in the year, a female booked into the jail on new felony drug charges. During the first two hours of incarceration, she became increasingly tired and lethargic. She was placed in an observation cell and immediately fell asleep. Molly was vigilant and conducted breathing checks every 15 minutes. She repeatedly expressed her concern for this inmate as her breathing became noticeably inconsistent and her skin color turned ash gray. Molly and the other staff were aware of these changes because she monitored her condition continually. Molly called a nurse to make an assessment after it became increasingly difficult to wake her. Another medical assessment found that she was exhibiting edonal type of breathing."
I don't know if anyone at the meeting can hear this, but we are not getting any sound of the meeting on Zoom. We can't hear anything.
Commissioner Ainge, it looks like you're muted. Is that possible?
Yes. But I'm supposed to be. Do an audio check. Can y'all hear us on the call?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Great. Thank you. Unfortunately, we got, we got a little bit disconnected. We were telling the story of Deputy Molly Fillerup as the Employee of the Month, and I'm just going to cut it short, but essentially, this was the summary, is the night that her efforts certainly saved the life of that inmate. The final statements here, Deputy Fillerup is the epitome of consistency, professionalism, and hard work. She has been a great friend and coworker over the years. She is definitely deserving of this recognition. And then here's a few comments from coworkers. Molly cannot be replaced, and you can tell when she is not around. Her caring personality and knowledge shows each day at work when her coworkers have questions. She's training someone on tasks of booking or reviewing booking processes. She has a great attitude and is valued by those around her. She always goes above and beyond to help other people. She's great. She's friendly. It goes on and on and on. And so with that, let's once again celebrate Molly and ask her to come up and receive this recognition. Okay. We will now go through the process of building our agenda. It'll be noted that a few of these other recognitions, folks are out there in the line of service right now. Our thoughts are with them. There's some unique situations happening, and so we are going to postpone recognizing these employees until another meeting in the future. So every item that is on consent will be approved. Or every item on this published agenda will be approved on consent unless it is held for discussion. And through the first couple of pages, I do not have anything to hold.
So I would, I would recommend that item number one, number three, and number four be moved to our, leave, be left on consent, but be moved to our, our next meeting.
Okay, yes. Item one, three, and four continued to our next meeting.
Sounds good.
I think item, I, I go all the way to regular agenda, item number one, which we could table that for discussion.
Okay. Do we also table number seven?
Table. Number seven. I have a question. Do we have, I don't know if Dave Shachraft is on, or if anyone else can advise on this. Are we? Is number nine? Does this include any of the updates? Or no, it's number 10. Are we all up to speed where we need to be for the meetings? I know there's been a lot of-
This is Dave Shachraft. I believe item nine, there's no change. Item 10 should be the, the latest updated loaded order should include all of the latest information which we received from Ezra.
Okay. And I'm just confirming, does that, that includes the attorney's office meeting in there? Great. Okay. Anything else?
So there's, there's no document with item number eight that was published. So there'd be nothing to approve.
Well, yes, let's, let's certainly hold that. We will hold that for discussion, and I'm not sure also what the document, so we'll discuss that when it comes up.
And let's, and then number, number 19. We just kind of this one, this one was held, I mean, this one we did before. I think you wanted this, wanted to have more, more time on that, so I don't know. I was fine with it. I didn't know if we wanted to have more discussion or not from your discussion, from your, your holding it last time.
I'm happy to do that, or I can also just give you an update that nothing has changed since then. I had some questions, but it turned out my questions were more about the appeal process.
Okay.
Which this is not modifying at all. It's just the initial determination.
I, I was fine with it before, so if it's, nothing's changed, I'm fine with it.
And I'm fine with it as well, so.
At the moment, it would be approved on consent? The hold, the discussion?
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay.
So 11 on regular hold?
We're holding that, okay.
Oh, I see, because it says approve or deny. Okay, yeah, it should be held for action.
Okay.
Good catch.
All right, we'll move right into these items, which the first is item number eight. Cares Grant Update. I'll turn the time over to Michelle, Michelle Carroll from Mountain Land Association of Governments.
Thank you. I am here on behalf of the Utah County COVID-19 Economic Recovery Committee to provide an update on the $20 million CARES Act program. Originally, when the committee was convened, they decided to use 15 million, about 20 million for a small business grant program and $5 million for a nonprofit program. The first round of small business grants, they accepted applications for three weeks in August and ultimately approved 774 businesses at about $8.9 million. For the nonprofits, they used the entire $5 million and granted awards to 53 nonprofits, which left $6,62,000 left. We are currently in our second round of small business funding for grant awards. The applications opened October 2nd. They close October 19th. We are currently doing a lot of marketing efforts to receive more applications. Some of the restrictions were loosened. Most notably, they are accepting applications from 1099 contract workers as well as the original Small Business Grant Program Round One. Businesses had to be established by March 1st, 2019. That has been extended to March 1st, 2020. So it should open the door to some businesses that did not qualify for the first round. So again, that closes October 19th. Right before I came to this meeting, I checked the status of applications. We had 57 submitted applications for a total of 540,000 asks. We also can see pending applications, so those don't always translate to submitted applications. But we have about 120 pending applications for about $1 million in asks with 12 days still left in the program. Typically, we see our highest jump in application semitals over the weekends. So on Tuesday's COVID-19 call with the commission and the mayors, we mentioned the possibility of having some leftover funding after this second round of small business grants. Some scenarios were thrown out. We did get some feedback, and we appreciate that feedback. And the committee, after hearing that feedback and having some more discussions, would like to recommend that if there are any remaining funds after the second round of small business grants, that those funds would remain under the discretion of the committee and would be used to receive proposals from the jurisdictions that would still continue to provide economic support in the jurisdictions, and allocations would be based on population. And I do have, if you're interested, what the different scenarios are depending how much money is left and what that would look like for each jurisdiction. I'm happy to answer any questions.
First off, thank you for a lot of work this last little while. And, and also the, the help to, you know, a lot of businesses and nonprofits that that are out there that are, and probably there's a lot more than, than we've seen and know about that are suffering through, you know, this, this, some of the economic spin that's going on. And you can correct me if, if I'm not mistaken, but I believe the, the contract that, that we have in place right now indicates that if the funds are not spent, that they would be turned back into the county by a certain date.
December 31st, 2020.
Yeah. There, there was not, there was not a time before that that-
No, there was. It was earlier than that.
Like in November 1st or something of that nature. And so I think right now we're under that, that contract, and I think what you're proposing now is to amend that contract or to change that, because that's, that, that's currently the contract language that I remember anyway. We can go back and find that, find that language.
And they're not necessarily asking for an extension to expand the funds, just for the ability to take proposals from the cities for economic support and expend the funds in that manner.
I understand that.
But actually, I mean, to Commissioner Lee's point, I think technically, if that's their request, they also do need to ask for an extension because there was a deadline written in. I mean, maybe not, because if October, if October 19th is great, but I'm just saying, if, if the intention is that it would go past that original deadline, then we would need to clean that up.
And that's not the intention, so by October 19th, we'll know the requests for the small business awards, and we'll also be able to weed out the ineligible applications. So we'll know that final amount. That's on Monday. We anticipate being ready on the 21st, and so that the committee would meet on the following week. I believe it's October 20th, Tuesday, October 20th, and at that time would begin making decisions for any leftover funding. So we would still be able to meet the deadline.
So I, I, and I see what you did. I, I saw the email, you know, that, that you put forward. So I, I, um, and I see what you did. I, I saw the email, you know, that, that you put forward. Um, one of the scenarios that you didn't have in that, in there though, was probably a fourth, and that was to follow the contract as, as we had, you know, originally agreed to. Um, but still, I think that we need to have this discussion, uh, and I think it's an applicable discussion for all of us, all of us to have. My concern is, is that, one, uh, we would have to go through an amending process with, with our contract that we already have in place, and, and two, we have no documents, you know, to even act on that have been listed, you know, in our, in our agenda today. So I, I'm viewing this more as an update than I am actually, um, you know, moving it forward with any action. And so I, I, and, and there was, and so maybe some of the, some of the concerns is that the reason why we went with the big pot is, is because there was a lot of cities and, and towns, and even some that turned money back to us and said, you know, I don't even want to mess with this, and they don't have the ability to go out there and do things on an economic basis, and so they wanted to bring it into a bigger pot and have a bigger reach. And, and now it looks like we're, we're, we're sending this money back out even to some of these smaller towns who have already turned some money back in. I don't know if we've crossed some of those lines or what, how that would work. I would sure like to, you know, know what their, what their thinking is when, when it comes to that.
Okay, I will definitely bring that back to the committee. Thank you.
Michelle, I still want to understand really what it is that, so what you're saying is round two is still going to follow the same pot, same process?
Yes.
MAGS administering the grant, you've all set the same criteria, and that committee is deciding where it goes.
Yep, we've loosened the criteria a little bit, um, but it is for the small business grants. It's still pulling out of that original $15 million pool. It would obviously be our hope that we do get enough requests, um, to expend all the money. Um, but within the two weeks, we're unsure, and we just wanted to get ahead of it in case we do have leftover money so we can get it out as fast as possible.
So then, that's what I'm wondering. Okay, so that doesn't require any of this discussion. You guys are already moving on that part of it.
Correct.
So assuming that there is a lot of extra leftover funds, so that then, you know that October 20th?
Yes.
Right, you know, and so then, what is the ask, what are you actually saying you would do with the funds at that point?
Committee is requesting that any leftover funds, um, so if we don't, um, have $6,62,000 in eligible asks from the second round, the committee is requesting that they can entertain proposals from each jurisdiction for economic support and then expend the funds that way. Um, and the dollar amounts would be based on population.
Are the cities the recipients?
Um, it depends. Each city, um, we've had some different ideas. For example, um, in one of our cities, um, there was a grant given to a business. It, it wasn't enough. Um, it, it was the largest amount we could offer, $20,000 under our guideline, um, but this business could really use more. It's in an industry they haven't opened up yet, but they would like to. Um, and so this particular city would use their economic support for more grant funding. Um, there are other ideas that you've heard-
Sorry, that would go to the business?
That would go to the business, yep. But the city would decide that if they had these funds.
So that's what I'm trying to understand, is the city, is the city deciding, or is the committee deciding?
Committee would approve the city's applications. Um, some of the cities would then turn around and give it to, directly to the businesses, um, with looser guidelines and the small business grant, um, provided. Some cities talked about, um, you know, doing the coupons to drive business, uh, drive, uh, consumers into businesses. Um, half off, and then the funding would pay the business that 50% for that coupon. Does that make sense?
So then they would do that on a per, a city basis?
Correct.
So a certain city would have a, a, a certain amount of allocation according to population, and they would be able to drive that, that discussion within their own city?
Yes.
But they couldn't be, take it from another city and say, we want to drive that discussion with, with funds that way?
Each jurisdiction would submit their proposal to the committee to make sure it fa, uh, fell under that economic support guideline that this committee was designated, um, to spend the money on. And then, um, but each city could do something potentially different within that economic support guideline.
Okay.
And Commissioner Lee, just for clarification for you, part of this agenda item was for these exact kind of questions and discussion. Uh, the committee is, hope is to kind of get a feel for the commission's appetite and if this is worth pursuing or not.
Correct, yeah, we can bring additional information. Just, um, maybe with Commissioner Lee's question. So say, let's, for instance, we've had some discussion with, um, Goshen, that they have a limited number of businesses, um, and they don't have the time to go out to those couple of businesses and say, here's some money. So that money from Goshen could go back into that pool and be distributed to communities based off a population that could use that funding. Does that make sense?
Right.
So Goshen's allocation of $2,000 could go back into the pool, be split up among those communities that say, we have the resources to do this. Does that make sense?
So it wouldn't necessarily be in Goshen. It could be outside of Goshen, but they would be the drivers of where it goes.
Yeah, and it would be Goshen saying something like, hey, no, we don't, or, you know, it would actually help us if businesses in Santaquin could receive this assistance because instead of Goshen, we go to Santaquin. So Goshen could do that, and that would all come back to that committee, and that committee could say, okay, Goshen, your portion can go to businesses in Santaquin because that's where you shop for whatever.
Concern I, the, the one concern that I have just with the, what's being proposed is that it kind of feels like the committee is not really playing a role in this final distribution, and it's just kind of automatically going on a population basis. I don't know if you could address that, and, and, because the more it looks like that, the more it kind of feels like we're actually winding down this agreement and this arrangement and just trying to get the funds back. And if that's the way, there, there are other ways of addressing that, right? But it, it kind of feels like, because initially, the committee was very involved in deciding what grants and what the procedures were. Any comments on that?
Uh, just only that, at the last committee meeting, that was the discussion, um, based on population. Um, we didn't talk a lot of, about a lot of other ideas, but certainly with your feedback, we will bring that back to the committee, um, if they should think about other ways to distribute it outside of based on population. Um, it's, some of it, I will say, does have to do with the capacity of a city to get the money out of the door. I mean, obviously, the larger cities have economic development staff that specialize, um, in economic support, and so they feel like with the larger amounts of money and the number of businesses that they have and the number of nonprofits, um, they do have the ability to get the mon, money out faster than a city that, um, perhaps has, you know, a part-time clerk, uh, no economic development staff.
Sorry, what does that, I'm not sure what you meant by that. So like, what, what would the big city want to have happen, and what does the small city want to have happen?
It, it really, it really depends. We haven't, um, gone out and sought the proposals from the cities. Um, we're just, these are discussions that are happening within the committee.
Because, I mean, I certainly understand that a, a smaller city has less staff. I mean, that's been a dynamic we've been trying to be mindful of the whole time. I just don't know how that's relevant to the discussion of what to do here.
So our committee members are made up of, um, so Mayor Stihle from Goshen, you know, he has said, exactly as Andrew said, you know, we don't have the capacity to get that amount. Uh, we'd be happy to, um, give ours to Santaquin or in that area for economic support. Obviously, the bigger cities, um, provo orum that have the economic development staff could get that funding out.
Got it. No, now I hear what you're saying. It's not so much a change in the process. They're willing to just forego the funds
Mm-hmm.
because they can't administer them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And, and, and so again, it's, it's an evolving process. We've had discussions with the committee. We had, uh, telephone conversation that you were on with Mayor Johnson's update and that information we get from that, and still evolving, but we wanted to get it on the agenda so you know what's coming down. So if we come back next week or two weeks, whatever your meeting schedule is, and we can work through this and say, okay, this is what's acceptable, this isn't acceptable, this works, this doesn't work, and try and make it, so we, we were very aggressive in getting information out to the businesses, and, you know.
And some of this, you don't, we don't know, right?
Right.
It, it, it all depends on, this changes in importance depending on how many businesses actually apply.
Yeah, and some cities said, I'm surprised this business didn't apply because we think that they need it and they could use it and they, they would be eligible. And so it's going to be somewhere, it's going to be more of the cities going out and being very proactive to target some of the businesses and say, hey, we think you should get this funding, and then maybe it can help it out that way versus-
So can I talk about my concerns maybe with this as the auditor, and I'm not saying it's not a good idea, but as the auditor, when I look at this, we have to account for how that money was spent, and we have a timeline for it. And we're giving it to the cities late enough that if they don't, so for example, maybe one of those cities didn't apply for it because they got an SBA loan, and they're not eligible. Maybe they didn't apply for it because they got a GOED loan, and they're not eligible. And so, I mean, some businesses, even with a GOED loan or an SBA loan, they're still hurting. And so we don't know what they did, and if we give it to the cities at this, you know, at, at a late hour, you know, we're giving it to the cities in November, and then they have less than 30 days to do turnaround. If it doesn't get spent, then it's coming out of my bank account, not the city's, not MAGS. It's coming out of my bank account. And then I'm going to have to like play collector, collector to go back and get that, you know what I mean? So I don't, I wouldn't necessarily feel comfortable with us doing this unless they have a plan. This is the business. This is why they didn't apply. They are eligible, and I would like them to have this money. If we had a plan like that, I would feel more comfortable with it.
Yeah, and so that's, that's what we're looking at doing, is we're trying to get the commission to, to look at this. We'll bring it back, get any approvals that we need, or if it falls under the existing contract, we'll do that.
Maybe the city should do that as well. I mean, when you bring it back, if the cities, if you were to come back to this meeting and say, Provo talks to these businesses, this is the reason they didn't apply, they're eligible, this is how much money they'd like to give, then I think it's a lot easier for the commissioners to make that decision, and it makes us on the legal and the audit side feel more comfortable with that. So maybe in the meantime,
Great feedback.
if that's happening, then it makes it a lot easier.
And do you want us to work with you, or Josh, or the attorney, or?
Work with Peter.
Okay.
Okay.
On, on that, yeah.
And I, I do want to clarify, just for the record, that businesses that did receive other economic re, uh, support are eligible. So we encourage all businesses that have received other economic support to apply. Um, and, um, and we do appreciate the feedback, and we'll bring this all back to the committee. Um, any other, um, comments?
One, one more thought. There was, um, uh, you know, given to me, uh, that during the nonprofit status, that, uh, um, charter schools were taken off and that it all went to publics, public, public schools only.
Um, no public schools were funded.
No public schools were funded?
No.
Okay. There was just a thought, though, that with nonprofit status, uh, was any charter schools, did they apply?
Yes, we did have some charter schools apply, um, and they did not rank high. Um, the nonprofit was a competitive pool. We received 7.3 million dollars in asks, and the committee did set forth priorities, and the, um, charter schools that did apply did not, uh, rank high in the priorities set forth.
Well, I think in the meeting, from what I understood from watching those meetings, was that they felt that if they funded a charter school, then they had to fund all schools, not recognizing that, that the traditional public schools were eligible from funding from the State Department of Education, from the state's CARES Act dollars, but charter schools did not have access to that same pool because they are nonprofits, not traditional public schools. So I think the, the point from, looking at that from an auditor's standpoint, was that just because you fund a charter school, doesn't mean you have to fund every other public school, because the other public schools had access to money that charter schools did not have. So I think that, does that clarify?
Yeah.
I think that's what the auditors note on that was.
I'm just wondering if it shouldn't be taken back to the committee just for evaluation of that.
Okay. Yep. Okay.
My only other comment, thanks, thanks for all you're doing. I, I do think that the, probably the, the next, um, when this comes back, it, it probably is not best for us to just kind of make a decision or bless a change. The appropriate action would be a modification to the interlocal agreement.
Okay, great. We'll be prepared for that, um, and if I could just make a final plug, um, to spread the word that we are accepting applications for the second round. We'd love to get all the money out this second round.
And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, turning to regular agenda item number 11. I think this was, I don't know if there was discussion or if we just need to hold to, for motion.
Um, it just, yeah, there just has to be action.
Okay, entertain a motion?
I'll make a, a motion that we approve the request as stated number 11 on our published regular agenda.
Second.
A motion, a second to approve, regular agenda item number 11. All in favor, say aye.
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 That passes 3-0. Okay, that completes our regular agenda.
We tabled number seven?
Yeah, we tabled it, so we will, we will address that in our closed meetings and bring it back. And so now we will move to a work session item. Uh, item number one, a budget presentation from USU Extension.
So, do I need to take my mask off for presentation? For any reason, or?
Feel comfortable.
Okay. Either way, uh, my name's Tom Bettis. I'm with Utah State University Extension. I'm a resident of Santaquin also. So, uh, we are here to uh, present a, our proposed budget for the 2021 fiscal year according to the county calendar. And, uh, that I will try to be as thorough but as brief as possible. And I appreciate your time in allowing, uh, this to be here. So, let's see, in this proposal, I've, uh, put in needs assessment that Utah State University has performed across the state. There was a statistically relevant sample out of Utah County in urban, suburban, and rural, rural areas represented in this needs assessment, and, uh, that's on the second page of this binder, you know, a little easier to read. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that, but what I wanted to show is that the university has put efforts into finding out needs within the counties and wants to be able to better detail programming according to county residents. So, as far as the needs assessment, and we'll get into a little bit more on programming in a few minutes, the next page here, um, talks about our, uh, impacts, and so the satisfaction with our clientele and the program areas here. And the lowest satisfaction area is in livestock, at .83 out of 1, or 83 out of 100. However you want to look at that as far as quality and relevance, but as far as usability, everything's in the 90th percentile in trust and everything but livestock in overall satisfaction, and that's at .87. So the clientele, you know, is happy with what extension is presenting and the information presented. So one other thing I want to point out, and I'm going to let Melanie, uh, do the second half of this presentation according to 4H. But I, before we get into budget requests, I wanted to show, and this is still fairly conservative, what Utah State University is bringing into the county. And, uh, as far as just county-based faculty that work full-time in Utah State, or USU faculty based in the county that work full-time, just salaries, and this doesn't include benefits and other, you know, retirement and things, $414,000 in direct salary for faculty. Then horticultural and agricultural research and monitoring services rendered by the county and by campus, uh, 587,000 there, and this is what I'll let Melanie address, but the 4H just pulled down a new grant for just over a quarter of a million dollars that will be spent mostly in Utah County. And then volunteer services, and this is going by government rates, um, rendered $384,000 worth of community service according to hours spent. So I just wanted to bring that up before we get into the budget requests. Um, agriculture and horticulture pro- Agriculture and horticulture programs, I, I spent a lot of time last time I presented, a few months or so ago, on the agriculture and horticultural programs here. And what I'll point out is in front of this binder, there's a fact sheet meant for professional fruit growers on rootstocks suitability, various rootstock suitability for Utah County. And that fact sheet, I think it's around seven pages, but it's nine or ten years' worth of work consistently to get that information. And what it's showing is tree size, yields, and fruit quality by rootstock. And how that's usable to a fruit farmer selling peaches. You know, I've got a picture of chelated iron there on the presentation, and it's not unheard of if an orchard has trees with an iron deficiency for a farmer to have to spend ten dollars per tree per acre, and there's two hundred trees per acre, to try to remedy that with this expensive form of iron that will allow trees to get enough iron out of their soil. And these applications usually need to be done annually. So, these rootstock trials found rootstocks that were a lot more capable of taking iron out of our unique soils here. And if we can save farmers, and this is just one example, you know, two thousand dollars an acre just on not having to apply iron, but also looking at fruit quality and things, you know, that is the sort of work that USU is doing that is mul, takes multiple years to achieve. So, for twenty twenty, we were thankfully allocated three hundred and sixty thousand dollars from Utah County. And we acknowledge that this is taxpayer money, and we've done our best to use it efficiently. So the overall breakdown of this money, the fixed costs around two hundred and seventy-nine thousand four hundred. Now I've rounded everything to the nearest hundred. So if it looks like I'm just throwing out numbers, uh, they've been rounded just to make it easier to read. And then the programming cost is about eight, eighty thousand six hundred. So here's what I've put into our fixed costs here. Some of this may be a little bit flexible, but it's what I would like to see in there so that we can do business, you know, keep the doors open and keep the offices open. And so payroll, hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars lease, that's, all the numbers are there. And then, um, on our budget amount, eighty thousand six hundred, and that's divided among the different programs. Now, on our budget area and the programs, I wasn't sure where to put this in, but just with how slowly the wheels crank at USU and then within government entities in general, our funding didn't arrive last year until late March or April. And we found ourselves having to talk to the Conservancy District who houses us, saying, money's coming, don't worry, it's coming. And so, you know, we've worked out something with them this year that we paid the entire amount in a lump sum, and I think we can do that with them next year. But I put this five thousand six hundred dollars in at the bottom to cover some bills that we can't do that with. You know, if we lost our internet and phones for lack of payment, we would be in trouble. And so this-
On the screen?
Uh, oh, is it, let me forward, here we go. Wrong slide, apologize. So it's the bottom here, so this five thousand six hundred dollars is for things like phones and internet, coffee machine maintenance, to keep us in business until the funding does come through. So. Okay.
So, I mean, just on that though, you're, you're saying carryover. So is, is that fifty-six hundred dollars a carryover? Uh, a true carryover from this year into next year?
Well, the county granted us three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the contract, or the cooperative agreement reads that we may keep it or we may give it back to the county.
Yeah.
And so I'd like to keep that five thousand six hundred dollars from the twenty twenty budget so that until the twenty twenty-one money is allocated for us, that we have some money to pay phones and internet and a few other basics things so that we don't.
And so you're keeping the, you're keeping the, the fifty-six hundred dollars in the budget because you're anticipating doing it again next year?
Yes, that'll be-
That's, that's why it's in the budget.
That's why it's there for twenty twenty-one, but it's twenty twenty money.
Yep. Is that the, the total of the remaining amount?
Uh, well, in this budget, um, I may need to rework my math a little bit, but that fifty-six hundred dollars would come out of this year's budget. And so right now, we're still, you know, even after nine months, getting our office ready and still, you know, getting it up to speed for programming needs, especially with COVID, having to go to virtual programming in a lot of ways. There's still a lot of things that we need to do to be able to be efficient in that. And so, right now, unspent money after our bills are taken care of are thirty-seven thousand dollars. But I will foresee a lot, most of that being gone besides this fifty-six hundred just by, you know, our classroom doesn't really have a sufficient system in it so that we can do online education. And there's things like that that we will need to upgrade. Okay. Okay, so from our twenty-one twenty-one budget and Commissioner Range, when we were talking last year about being efficient and things, I found that, you know, if we just maintain as-is, that, that thirty-seven thousand dollars in the future may be left over, but it also, with that being said, doesn't necessarily allow us to be as efficient as we possibly could to where if we invested some money into some areas that we are, um, lacking. One of these areas would be an education facilitator, facilitator and a volunteer coordinator. And this would be a, uh, non-benefited position part-time, but what the purpose would be is to help facilitate events. You know, I'm responsible for planning most of the State Fruit Growers Association, um, education association meetings at the fairgrounds, where over a hundred people attend. There's a three-day event, and yes, I can do it, but if I'm taking a lot of time doing something that a part-time person could do just as easily, is that the best use of my time? And so as volunteer coordinating, you know, right now, our horticulture program volunteers, the USU Master Gardeners, we teach classes every year and we have about half of those folks perform their community service, which is part of the program, which is forty hours per person. And other counties that have a volunteer coordinator, their graduations are upwards of around seventy percent, and so that would mean more volunteer hours rendered to programs and to the county. The four H, and I think Melanie will address this, would also use this volunteer coordinator for the youth program volunteers. Okay, the other area that I would really like to put money towards is virtual and digital education efforts. Right now, you know, for example, our farm field days, we can teach between seven and eight thousand second-grade children in the spring, combined in the spring and fall events. We're only serving about fifty-five percent of the county's second graders due to a lack of capacity. I had conversations today with Dean Miner, who has been, uh, coordinating this event with Farm Bureau, and he feels like that we could probably reach between eighty and ninety percent of second graders with digital and, um, videoed, um, educational content. This content follows the state core curriculum for second grade and it is in the science curriculum, and I think that's why it's so well-received. The teachers that come to farm field days have above, they give us a little above nine out of ten on the quality of the education provided and the quality of the event. And so, part of this is that, you know, anybody can film a, an Instagram video and just with their phones, but to put something out that has some staying power, has some quality, that's vetted by necessary people to make sure that we're not misguiding anybody, you know, to have something professionally done, per ten-minute video, it's easily fifteen to twenty-five hundred dollars for videography and editing. And so, much of this funding would go toward farm field days videos and then some others. You know, we, I think I brought up last time I was here, field bindweed is a major problem in the county, both in residential areas and on farms. I quickly put together a couple of Facebook videos on field bindweed control in flower beds and in lawns, and combined, I think they had around sixteen or seventeen thousand views in just a couple of weeks. And so, an average video I put together, as long as they don't break the camera with my face or something, um, is, you know, around two or three thousand hits. And so there's just, that shows there's a huge demand for that sort of content. And what I put together with my cellphone is adequate for YouTube for a temporary thing, but for a more permanent video, we really would like to put better work into it than just what I can do holding a cellphone. So. Okay. Okay, so any questions on our budget requests, uh, for twenty twenty-one? I'll turn the time over to Melanie as soon as any questions are done.
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Oh, one thing I will address when we're done, I, I'm not quite sure of the next step as far as approvals, and I've been working with Adam in the attorney's office on scheduling and things, when things will be voted on. But if you have any suggestions or anything for me when we're done, I would be very happy to get those.
Can I, can I ask you one?
Sure.
One personal question, since you're the expert gardener in our county. I hear you on the radio all the time.
I'm sorry.
Saturday mornings. Um, hoop houses in garden boxes, how, how effective are they in keeping the later frost off? I mean, how long can you typically go before it starts to damage the plants?
In an average year, until mid-November.
Mid-November.
Yes, so what the problem you run into is not only the cold, but it's the lack of light. And so even though you could probably insulate something like, uh, mustard greens or Swiss chard through the winter, it's not gonna grow much because there's just not enough sunlight to force a lot of growth. And so there are, um, growers, you know, campus has some research greenhouses, and there are growers around that will use the heat cable used for roof, they bury that in the soil in their cold frame, and it heats it up, and they can keep things growing through December. Things slow down through January, then as soon as February, when our daylight starts to increase, those plants start to respond fairly well.
Yeah.
Thank you. Turn the time over to Melanie.
Hey, good afternoon. I'm Melanie Ogun, I'm the USU four H program, Youth Programs Coordinator. I have been in the role for officially one year, so I'm really excited about that. Just real quick, just introduction to myself, um, I come to Extension from, with an education background. I spent twenty years as a classroom teacher and a small school administrator, doing many, wearing many, many hats. So I'm excited to be a part of this and to bring my education background into youth programs and, and help build that. Um, oh, there's, okay. So, with that being said, just real quick, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time here, this is a quick overview of what is four H, why we have it. Four H is a research-based program, it's throughout the nation and housed in every county and overseen by land-grant universities in each state. In Utah County, we offer three key programs. The first of which is a four H mentoring program, this is grant-funded. And as Ton alluded to, this program recently received a renewal of a seven hundred and fifty thousand plus dollar grant to continue on for an additional three years. In addition to that, the previous grant was extended due to the, due to COVID. And so they have an additional year of financing associated with that, so this really pushes us out into four additional years with an addition, um, for this. The mentoring program serves youth in, mainly in Title I schools throughout the county and provides a one-to-one opportunity for them to step up, step out. But in addition to meeting the individual child, it's also a family-based program. So siblings and parents are being involved in that to create a strong family dynamic. Associated with that is our four H Health Rocks program. It is specifically geared at substance abuse prevention for youth in grade seven through nine. And they are overseen by a coordinator and work with high school and early college-age young adults who serve as their mentors in guiding them through healthy relationship, healthy decision-making, focused on substance abuse prevention. And then the last part of the youth programs we have here in the county is our traditional four H program, one that I work in specifically. And that's comprised of community clubs, um, family clubs, which we now refer to as four H at-home clubs, and focused on a variety of career readiness programming and leadership, skill building, um, through these various club programs. We look at service and service learning opportunities and the opportunities we have to participate in state, regional, and national experiences associated with four H. That's just real quickly who we are, some key highlights of our year. Our four H year started September one of this year, and it rolls over. So we start afresh every September one of each year. So as I've already noted, we're really excited to have had the grant renewal. Um, uh, three of our six four H state ambassadors are actually residents of Utah County, so half of the group, which is super exciting. And they've recently organized a quilt, handmade quilt project that, um, they had over sixty-seven quilts created and sewn, and then are giving to the Children's Justice Center. Um, and I'm not gonna go too far much into the rest of that, tells you a little bit about who we are and how we serve. One of the things that I wanted to touch base on is the excitement that I had, as much as COVID has impacted our, our things, I was grateful walking into a new role and a new program because it gave me a chance to get to learn and know and work with my co-host and crime, Caitlin Hepworth, in learning about four H and retooling our four H program as we take the reins in leadership with the program across the county. So we saw it as an opportunity rather than a hindrance for us, and that's provided us the opportunity to create online and hybrid experiences, um, develop our four H at-home summer program as well as other opportunities for youth to participate in. Um, and it was kind of a mixed blessing for our livestock youth in that they did have difficulty selling their animals over the course of time due to canceled events. However, on the flip side, they got a great learning experience on the agribusiness side of things, on how to sell and manage buyers and butchers and everything. So it was kind of a mixed blessing in many ways, and so we're glad that was able to, to work out. When we met in August, I heard we presented to you some data from a national study, from the Tufts study that was done for National Four H, talking about different youth engagement opportunities and feedback on that. Walking away from that meeting, um, I felt like there was a, a request to see how does that, what does that impact here in Utah County specifically, since it was a national study. So I took the opportunity to put together, and I would refer to it personally as an informal survey, and send it out to youth who were engaged in some aspect of four H between the years of two thousand fifteen and twenty twenty, a year that just closed. The survey is still out and we're still collecting data, but I have for you today some preliminary data. So what, one of the items Ton handed you was a double-sided sheet of paper, an infographic that shows you some of those results. Um, so what I just wanted to hit on were just four key areas that we felt were very important. And that was, first of all, the sense of belonging that the, that the youth indicated that they had as being a part of the four H program. And that ninety-six of percent of the youth indicated they felt cared for, they felt like they belonged, and they felt like somebody knew them and really wanted to be a source of help for them. The development of life skills, particularly responsibility and accountability, was very high. Many youth felt like they, through the four H program, they were able to increase their skill sets, that particular life skills. With regard to preventative programs such as the, the mentoring program and the Health Rocks and those sorts of things, as just in general four H, about eighty percent of our youth indicated they felt like four H had some impact on their lives in them not participating in risky illegal behaviors, driving them to more positive outlets and avenues. And eighty-nine percent felt like they had developed stronger relationships within their community, increased their worldview, um, with their interactions with different people from different socioeconomic levels, different backgrounds, um, different value or belief systems. So really hitting, and for me, these four areas kind of hit some of the key topics many of our youth are facing in our world today, in our society today. They need to belong to something, to develop strong life skills, to focus their energies in a positive and proactive manner, and to build those strong and healthy relationships so we can help prevent mental illness or decrease mental illness, decrease suicide rates, and the other social impacts that are facing many, many youth today. Um, and that's all I have. If you have any questions?
Thank you.
One, one question on the, um, on this survey, I know we asked this in the past.
Yes.
Are the, is this nationwide, or is this the Utah County?
That is specifically to Utah County.
Great. Yeah, we asked for that, I'm glad that you got that for us.
I have some questions.
Yes.
Over here, sorry. Um, one of the chapter styles you mentioned was the home-based chapter. Um, which, because of COVID, I know the four H chapters have had a hard time meeting.
Yes.
And I know that under your current regulations, a registered four H chapter is required to take the temperature of each child coming to and report that back to you. Is that the same for home-based chapters?
No, because the home-based chapters are typically family-oriented, so it's individual family groups that are meeting, and they don't meet a- And they don't meet across, youth from across the county.
Right.
So we have not asked families to provide their attendance, and typically the the reporting back is if someone in the group. Reports that they have been exposed to or specifically rated, so we don't, we're not actually.
So you don't have to do it every week for your meetings. It's just if someone in the chapter.
Correct.
Tests positive, okay? Um, one other question on the home-based family ones, do, does it have to be like? Parents and their children or gonna be a grandparent and their grandkids?
Yes.
Fantastic. I didn't know if my mom knew that because our four H chapter hasn't resigned. My mom has a, she leads our four H chapter. She has all of her grandchildren and we haven't signed up because she didn't wanna have to take everyone's temperature and report it every week. So there may be a little bit of an issue with the understanding of that.
Perfect, that's good to know.
I'm going to assume that your enrollment might be down a little bit, and that might be why.
A li- a little bit, not significant, but a little bit. Um, I run a month to report that I have to report back to the state of Utah. Because that's how I'm funded.
Well, I know that the community is really, really urging, um, well, they're not urging, they're yearning. For community involvement for their children, but some of them don't like having to report that every week and there may be some confusion there. So some clarification may help with your enrollment numbers there.
That's good, yes, and I know, and we're working on a lot of that. Our, our entire website is being rolled over by the university. Since we begin with the letter U, I think we're further down the line.
That would make sense.
But those are great things that we can add back into that as we revise.
Or even just sending out an email to your chapters, hey, as a clarification, it's not required every week, it's only if someone tests positive and home-based chapters don't have to do this. Family chapters don't.
And we have a whole new member management system as well, which is really, really easy to sign up and use, which I'm excited about. Back end's not so much fun, but on the user end, it's really easy and great, but that's good to know.
That also may be an opportunity for the, if you're looking in social media and social media budgets, that may be an opportunity to reach out to the community. There may be some people that aren't currently four H, but knowing they could do a a family chapter, they may be willing to. Because I, like I said, I think the community really is looking for this right now. Um, and from the survey results, it looks like this is a. If you look at it, it looks like it's a viable way to avoid juvenile delinquency. Like statistically, it looks like it's a viable way to avoid juvenile uh delinquency, and so I think in that aspect, it's. Um, every, every member of our community, not only is it a moral imperative to help them avoid juvenile. Delinquency, but it's also a fiscal imperative because juvenile delinquents tend to become adult delinquents and we pay for that in our jail system. So I think there's a financial and a fiscal area of that as well as a moral imperative, and so when you have both, you can't lose, right?
Right.
But anyway, that may be an opportunity. Um, the other questions I have about the four H chapter. What events like the mock legislature, what are the plans on the ability to start doing those or I know like the camps? Do we have any line of sight on if those are just a thing of the past or if we're just waiting until those are allowed or I, what are your thoughts on that?
So many of those larger projects or events are managed by state four H. Um, but with that being said, they're moving forward with them. For example, they've just announced a, an event referred to as four H University. They're doing it online. So we, on top of our county public health guidelines that we have, we must adhere to in each individual cities than public health guidelines. We have the university public health guidelines that we have to adhere here to as well, which I feel are a little bit stricter even. Um, so while we can have meetings, we have um what's called a design team training happening on the twenty-fourth of October. So it's a teen leadership training. Um. We are being allowed to meet, but the youth have to stay, they, they're not allowed to intermingle. They have to stay in their three separate spaces, and so there's a lot of that happening. The university is still not allowing the overnight experiences at this time. And I'm, I'm more of the pessimist, so I'm not expecting that for a while. But we're trying to turn the tide by offering the hybrid opportunities. Um, some online, some at-home during the height of of the COVID situation this summer, we did a lot of like home kits. And so resources were mailed home to families and then the kids jumped online and were, did activities. In synchronous with one another or asynchronously and then reported back and shared. So I think we're looking at a, a paradigm shift in how we attack some of these things for the next little while till the university is comfortable with. Overnight experiences and housing.
No, I know there's a split in funding, so some of those events that are being canceled, those are, those are not impacted by the county funding. That's will be state funding because it's by this state. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, so none of the cancellation of those events would affect your ask as far as the budget goes?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Ton Bettis again, uh, USU Extension. I wanted to follow up really quick on some projects. Dean Miner and I are going to be treating a phragmites patch at the county jail this Friday, as long as weather holds, it should. So we are still on that, and then I've initiated a new project that will also be taking place in the jail garden area. That looks at trees adapted to the west side of the county that's using the Aquifer and Jordan River for irrigation water. That water is naturally salty and some of the soils are, and because a lot of our population growth will be taking place out there. Part of that will be landscaping and a well-planned landscape can add anywhere from five to twelve percent to the value of a property. So uh, just for that on the tax end, but uh, just for. So we don't have a lot of trees dying and we can educate the public a little bit, I'm planting. A number of trees at the jail garden because they have salty soil and trialing them and watching them. I'm going to be collaborating with the program deputies and the inmates to maintain them. So that's going on out there. We also are going to be helping with the greenhouses out there, and then Dean Miner has tentatively initiated. A multi-year forage suitability project for salty soils, and so that's still in the planning. But it looks like it's going to get off the ground, so with that all, and unless you have any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ton. Okay, I guess we have a question. If we're going on this next work session, um. Suppose we could just plow ahead. I don't know how much time you think this is gonna take, Bryce? That's great, let's do it.
Bryce Armstrong's staff, um, be quicker if I'm needed to also. Um, the first item relates to a land use ordinance text amendment. Um, focused on providing clarification for the utilization of development credits in recreational resorts. Specifically for hotels. Um, the land use ordinance contemplates several types of development types, uh subdivisions, mountain home developments. Uh, recreational resorts. Um, s- think of Sundance, that's probably where we have our only recreational resorts uh, uh in the county currently. Um, rec resorts allow certain types of residential uses, uh, some types of commercial uses. And then also uh, kind of a, a hybrid of a commercial and residential use, a hotel. And so when you, when a person comes in to approve, get approval for a rec resort, they have to do a, a slope analysis. To determine the number of uh, development credits or or dwelling units that will be allowed within the rec resort. And that's based on the different levels of slope they have. And so once those credits are determined, then the developer's free to allocate those and and develop those credits. You know, through um, creating subdivision lots or uh, rec resorts allow condominiums, uh, attached units. And so that give you a little back uh, background on that, so we, we found that. We do not have anything that uh, relates to the allocation of a, a development credit, credit if someone wanted to build a hotel. Historically, the ordinance had contemplated various levels of um, development credit usage for hotels. I used to refer to uh, them as sleeping apartments, um, kind of a, a, a more uh, older term that was used. And so um, that was lost several years ago when we went through some amendments. I, I, I think that was probably inadvertent. And so currently, we don't have anything that would utilize any earned development credits if, if an applicant came in to build a hotel. So what this is, this is doing is to reinstate that. Um, we went through a process to determine what uh, how many hotel rooms would be equivalent to one development credit. We further defined what a development credit is. Historically, development credit has been, been referred to as just a, a single dwelling unit. And so um, that's kind of what, what this does. It creates the opportunity uh, for someone to come in, build a hotel, and then um, those development credits are utilized. According to the number of hotel rooms uh, in the hotel. When uh, the proposal is to uh, recommend seven hotel rooms equal one development credit. We went through a number of different types of metrics to kind of come up with that ratio. Uh, we looked at the uh, if you're using the, a single-family dwelling as kind of the benchmark for a development credit. We took a look at the last ten years of all the single-family dwellings were built in the CE two zone, which is where our rec resorts are allowed. Looked at their average size, the number of bedrooms each of them averaged, and uh, kind of came up with seven based on some of those, those numbers. So that's a quick overview. Um, that's kind of what this is intended to do. You can ask, answer any questions you might have. But right now, we don't have any provisions, so if a person comes in and builds, builds a hotel, it does not utilize any development credits. I think in, in the critical environment two zone, which is usually our, our canyon zones. The, the purpose of, of the development credits and the slope analysis is to look at these uses, especially residential use type uses that. That impact or, or put a lot of impact on the environment, and so we thought hotels should probably be subject to that also.
How would you consider, I mean, since we really only have one. Kind of specified use of this. Um. How much do you consider parking? On this, and when you're coming up with the, the number of. Rooms that equivalent to a hotel or a development credit?
Yeah, we, we, we looked at uh, trip generation, that's kind of another metric um, for hotels. Depending on if it's, if it's a resort type of hotel, just a, a main hotel, it, it varied. But uh, trip generation was between seven and ten um, for hotels, which is very similar to. Um, for a single-family dwelling, and so that was another metric we considered. Obviously, a hotel's gonna have its own parking requirements. Um, and I don't have those right, right in front of me, but uh, you know, a, a single-family dwelling requires two parking stalls per, per dwelling. And so a hotel's gonna have, you know, its own parking standard requirement. So we didn't look specifically at that connection, we did look at trip generation. Um, and it seemed to, to kind of match up with where we were landing between the, we're looking anywhere between five and ten and, and between these different metrics.
What, what's your definition of a hotel? How many, how many rooms, is it how many occupants, uh, what's, what's?
There's no limit to that. We do have a definition. I don't have that right in front of me, but it's kind of what you'd expect, you know, a, a place that allows transient lodging. Um, doesn't, doesn't include the full component of having a, a how, a dwelling unit in each room. That's how we, we, we define what a hotel room is to, to prevent that or to, to address that. And so, but to answer your, your question, we don't have a limit as to how many uh, rooms a hotel could have or how big it could be.
Or even on the, on the smaller side, I mean, if you have, if you've got a bigger house and you're running, and you're renting it out Airbnb and you have. You know, four or five different areas that could be rented out, let's say that's a pretty large space, is that considered hotel or is that still?
Well, we don't, we consider that a single-family dwelling. We don't limit the term of occupancy, the time of occupancy in a home. If a person wants to rent their house out for three years, if they're on, you know, uh, an LDS mission, they can rent that out. What we confer, what we limit it to, the ordinance limits, limits it to is to its occupancy. We define, and, and the occupancy is for one family at any given time. And that can be one, you know, family as, as related through marriage or blood or up to four unrelated singles. So if a person was using their single-family dwelling for short-term rentals, uh, at any point, they can only have that occupied by one family.
Yeah, I mean, I'll look forward to this is a helpful, you know, overview. I think that. This is, it could have a, a very positive impact if this allows for some clarity. And it allows for development in that area in, on our tourism in the county. Um, that's a major draw right now to our county. At the same time, I do think we have to be smart and make sure that we plan for it. I mean, that area right now, even without any additional. Um, amenities or rooms or facilities already struggles with parking. And so I'd just be curious to see those, those plans, to the extent we have discretion. I know that you're not, you're not coming here today to, to propose a development, but we're talking about. Some ordinance changes that seem to facilitate that, and so.
Yes and no. The, right now, rec resorts allow hotels, so, and, and um, Sundance has had us approached us with. Uh, the desire to, to build a hotel, and that's kind of brought this to our attention, saying we need to address how development credits are impacted. Um, through the building of a hotel, and so this is, so, so to back up. Hotels already have a parking requirement and, and whoever comes in and builds, builds a hotel under our current ordinance would have to meet that requirement. Um, they don't have limitations to the size or whatever, but they'd still have to meet that requirement. All this is doing is saying, yeah, you can still build that hotel, you still have to meet that, those parking requirements. But now, you know, you have X amount of development credits, a, a seventy-room hotel is gonna utilize ten of those development credits under this proposal. And so, and, and, and I know Sundance is, is it very interested in this and, and they've had some, uh, they've been aware of this. And they, they seem to, to be uh, not opposed to, to the proposal, but this is, again, this is applicable to any rec resort in the county.
Thank you.
So that's all I had on that one. If you had any other questions, I'll move on to the next one. Um, this next one's also a land use ordinance text amendment. Uh, if you recall, we've been going systematically going through the ordinance and, and doing some cleanups. Um, this is uh, the next step in this process. Uh, chapter three of our ordinance has three parts. The first part we've already addressed, it's kind of a general provisions. Chapter, uh, part two is related to environmental provisions. Um, the entire part two, chapter three is included, but there are only a couple smaller sections of this. Uh, part two are proposed to be amended. The first one is found in section three dash twenty. That's the section that requires Health Department approval for any water or sewage disposal systems. Uh, three dash twenty states certain uses need to, that, that require those type of facilities, need to have Health Department approval. I think that's already built into the health, health regulations, and so what we're doing here is just clarifying a little more which uses. Would be subject to this. Um, specifically, before we just had, um, you know, no residence or campground. Commercial establishment or manned industrial plant should be used until they get Health Department approval. What we've done is to, relative to campground, is we clarified either a commercial campground, you know, think of your, your campground you go to has sites, it has the water. Um, hiccups in a bathroom, or a, a non-commercial, a major non-commercial campground is usually our church camps. Those facilities have water and sewage disposal, so they, they need to have that approval. But we do have a use called minor campgrounds that allow people to go in, a little more primitive camping. Uh, maybe they're just putting some fire pits in or just a, a tent or a yurt uh, type of facility now. And those don't necessarily require um, permanent source of water or sewage disposal. So we're just clarifying that uh, only certain types of campgrounds. If they build that facility, if they build a bathroom there, then yeah, they still have to do that. Um, resort, that's a kind of a historical term that was used. We don't have a specific use for just resort. It's now contemplated as a rec resort, similar to what we just talked to, talked about, and that has its own requirements, including Health Department, uh, or health requirements. And on, on cursed commercial establishments, what we're really keying in on are occupied structures. Once you have an occupied structure, that's when you have to have a, a water source and a sewage disposal source. We do have some more remote type of commercial uses that may uh, not have an occupied structure, maybe a. A backcountry out, outfitter, and so there could be a commercial use that doesn't necessarily have these facilities. And so this kind of prohibited saying, that doesn't matter, you have to get this, this approval. And so we're just trying to adjust to the type of uses that, that we're trying to be subject to this. Kind of, any questions on that? That's nice, straightforward. Um, the rest of it, other than uh, three dash twenty-two is our flood protection. If you recall, we, we eliminated our flood uh, plain overlay zone in favor of a, a area of special flood hazard. That's lines up with uh, the FEMA uh, maps of, for the hundred-year flood zone, and so. Uh, we've already done that. We just had an old reference to the F, the flood plain overlay zone that we needed to eliminate because that's been replaced. And then the rest of it is adding the term lot or parcel. If you recall, state code changed to use those interchangeably. And so, but, but defined them separately, so we needed to, wherever it was referred to lot, we needed to include parcel or vice versa.
Great.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Thank you, Bryce.
You bet.
Okay, is there any public comment? Okay, seeing that, we will, I'll pin motions as they pertain to our proposed meetings.
So we need, as far as I know, we need fifteen and eighteen. I don't know if we need sixteen and seventeen.
Um. Yeah, we need seventeen.
So I'll make a motion that we strike number sixteen on our agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to strike seventeen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That's a three zero.
I'll make a motion that we approve instead of date, time, and location for closed meetings as outlined in fifteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Second.
For right now. Oh, yeah, for, for today's date at this location following our past meetings.
Okay, we have a
Second.
motion and a second as stated. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we will now move into our closed meetings.